As happens throughout the year, there's a continual fluctuation of numbers at the varying grade levels. At the high school, we have 989 students. At the middle school, there's 714 students. At Wentworth, staying stable at 734, or 630, sorry, 673. At Blue Point Primary School, we have 193 students, same as last month. At Eight Corners, we're up three students at 227. And then at Pleasant Hill, we're up a student at 174. At this time last year, our enrollment was at 2,990 students. So it's 20 students less than it was at this point last year. But we continue to monitor this and we're also using a couple of tools that were created for us by planning decisions. And we'll talk more about this at our next workshop meeting when we're looking at our long-range facilities plans for the district. But we're right on target for what the, we actually did two projections with our enrollment. One was called the best-fit enrollment and then another was adjusted for new housing improvements that were happening in town. And so we're really right on track with the projections for the new housing improvements, which predicted that this school year, we would be at 2,966 students. And so we're just four students higher than that. Where the best-fit model had us at like 2,903 students. And we knew when we saw those numbers that that wasn't going to actually be the reality for us, given all of the development and the progress that's happening in Scarborough. So little update, just three years, three months into the school year to give the folks at home and in our community a sense of what our enrollment's looking like this year. And then we also have one other report tonight. I've asked our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Monique Colbertson, to come and give us an update on the Maine Educational Assessment System. So this is our standardized testing that occurs annually here in the Scarborough Public Schools and in other public schools across the country. But Monique is going to talk specifically about what's happening here in Maine and then give you a sense of how have we been progressing and how have our students been performing over time in transition through the various different types of assessments that have existed. So we do not yet have public current data that we can share with the public. Monique's going to speak to that as well. But it's coming soon, so we just wanted to make sure that everybody was ready to receive that information when it is made public. So I turn it over to Monique and thank you for all the time that you've put into developing this presentation.
You're welcome. Good evening. As Superintendent Kuchenberger has shared, we wanted to provide you a little bit of context. I originally targeted, the public release of the state data was scheduled for December 5th. I just found out yesterday afternoon, due to some adjustments they needed to make on the reporting site, it's now set for December 7th. So that, and I'll describe the reasons why, actually. Here is, my technology going here? But I wanted to give you an idea of what, a little bit of a history about what's been happening here and then also how we use the data moving forward. It is, it has been a changing landscape. This chart describes for grades three through eight and also for grade 11, a little bit different. In the past, we have had a test we refer to as the KNECAP. They're all the Maine Educational Assessments. These different names under test name, Maine contracts with a vendor who produces the test for the state. And in the past, we had a number of years of KNECAP, which is the New England Consortium. And it moved from the MEA, which Maine contracted independently for, we moved to the consortium to save some funds. That test, the KNECAP test, was always in October. And that's important to note when we start looking at results, because we're really talking about the year before. But those were based on the Maine learning results. And they covered reading and math, grades three through eight, every year, three, four, five, six, seven, eight students were tested. But for writing, in grade five and eight and 11, writing was assessed. But in 1415, in light of the Common Core and the adoption by the state of Maine of the Common Core, and we call those the Learning Results Common Core now, the Smarter Balanced Assessment was used for one year only. And because of a legislative mandate, we shifted from the Smarter Balance. The legislative piece stated that we no longer wish to have, the state no longer wished to have a relationship with the Smarter Balance, with that consortium. And so the test changed once again. It's now referred to as the Empower Me test. It's still the MEA, but we refer to it as the Empower Me, a different vendor once again. The timeline was quite tight. The RFP for proposals didn't even go out until the fall of last year. So for a testing company to put together the testing pieces as well as the reporting site, it was a tall order. So we all worked together as a state to implement and do the best job we could at implementing this new assessment. But it too is based on the Maine learning results, which are based on the Common Core. One difference with the Empower Maine was that reading and writing got merged into literacy, what's called literacy. So where we used to get three sets of scores, now we're only getting three sets of scores, reading, writing, and math, now we get a literacy score. So that's another reason why it makes it very difficult to compare. Grade 11 in the past, it was called the Maine High School Assessment, but it was really the SAT. And this is where the state contracted with the College Board to make the SAT our state test. And then they worked with the College Board to set proficiency levels, because that's how our state tests are reported. But in the year of the Smarter Balanced Consortium, because Maine was connected to the Smarter Balanced Consortium, the students did not take the SAT for the state test. They took this different test. And then many of our students also took the SAT. And that's where the pushback came in that year, in terms of too much testing, particularly at the high school level. And then this past year, the state has gone back to contracting with the College Board. Science, for better or for worse, has stayed the same. It's been based on the Maine learning results, which are getting close to about 20 years old. There are new national standards, but the state has yet to adopt those new national standards. But the test, referred to as the MEA, assesses those learning results in science. What I wanted to share with you is how we use the data. We analyze it by looking at trends over time in order to make big decisions. For individual student data as well as for group data, we always look at other data sets as well. We don't make huge decisions based on any one data set. We always try and look at multiple data sets to make good decisions. And we also want to ask ourselves lots of questions and find additional information to make sure that the conclusions that we're drawing are accurate. So we look at it by comparing with our state and our neighbors over time. We also track a grade level and we also track a group of students as well. And I can, I'm going to be showing you some charts and some graphs and how we do that. An important piece to keep in mind, and this is an important chart to keep an eye on, is we've made some significant investments in our schools over the years. New curriculum materials, we've done quite a bit of standards work. We've had some redesigns. At the middle school, our students have entered into the Wentworth School, a new school. There is research that shows that facilities has an impact on student achievement. So I've included the new Wentworth School in one of our organizational shifts. And most recently, the high school has added that A East period, that academic enrichment and support as well as advisory. So I've included those in our timeline for Scarborough. I'm going to show you quite a few slides with lots of data. We're not going to go through every piece of data here, but I want to just give it to you as a highlight. What I've identified are the last four years of our KNECAP data. So it's older data, it's a couple of years old now. I've only pulled out grades five, eight, and 11, reading, math, and writing. I've also included the state data. And I've also included comparison schools. Instead of lots of schools, we've identified these four school districts, two of which, if you recall, the CPARE report provided during the last budget season last year. Falmouth and Yarmouth are considered aspirational districts as a result of their community profiles, their investments, and their enrollment. And yet, we've also, I've also included RSU 21, which is Kennebunk, which is a comparable district, most closely aligned with Scarborough, and South Portland, which is not a comparable district to us. So we have those four. And we'll begin with taking a look at reading across the grade level. And if you can squint a little bit, and in your paper copies, I tried to make the charts large enough, if you can squint a little bit, you'll notice that our performance here, we have Scarborough, we have Maine, we have Falmouth, we have Kennebunk, South Portland, and Yarmouth. And you'll note, four years of data, with the blue bar reflecting the oldest set of data, 2010, 11. And so pretty quickly, you can take a look at any trends, four-year trends within our school district and compare those trends with other schools. You can also compare our performance and that trend to the state of Maine as well. And in reading, we historically have always performed rather well, and I'll show you in comparison to writing. And particularly with, I always take a look at where Kennebunk is, because they are a comparable district and how we perform relative to Kennebunk. You'll note that after this year, the reason why the test, state test changed was because of more rigorous standards, the Common Core standards or the Maine learning results. And that was the whole reason for changing the assessment. So another piece that we look at, and this is the percentages of students who meet or exceed the state standard. The data that isn't displayed on the screen is the data that we spend the most time at. So while 84% of the students in 2010, oops, excuse me, wrong button. Eighty-four, while there are 84% met or exceeded, that's 16% of the student population who partially met or did not met, we spend an awful lot of time mining that data, identifying those students, and providing support for those students. So while we focus on our gains here, I want people to realize that we spend an awful lot of time going in, taking a look at those students, looking at other data sets, talking about the programming for those students, to help support those students moving forward. So keep an eye on the 2010, 11, as a fifth grader, in what year would they be an eighth grader?
13 here.
13, 14.
Class.
Pardon?
13.
So if we look at the eighth grade data, what color bar would those kiddos have been as fifth graders?
Blue as fifth grade.
Yellow.
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 So we can follow a cohort, thank you, Jody. We can follow a cohort of students. So that class in 2010, 11, of fifth graders, 84% met or exceeded. As eighth graders, it would be the yellow bar and we are at 86%. So another way we look at the data, we organize it a little bit different to focus on cohort data, is we track a group of students over time to see if that changes, if we're really moving students along and increasing the numbers of students who meet or exceed. In the 11th grade, you'll notice across the boards, a bit of a drop. Because the SAT one is in the spring, but it's the SAT, it's an entirely different assessment. So you can notice that everyone's performance has dropped, but that may be a factor of the rigor of that assessment. It's also delivered in one day, as some of you may recall, in three or four-hour chunk of time, where the KNECAP is delivered in smaller chunks, an hour or two at a time over the course of several days. So we have to look at all of those when we start comparing our data. But looking at Scarborough's performance, again, I like to compare it to our comparable district, which would be Kennebunk. And in this case, we are pretty comparable there. Moving along, looking at writing. First thing you'll notice in grade five is great variability over time. This worries us, worried us at the time. And we also, in comparison to reading, didn't feel as if we were doing as good a job within writing, and that was one of the reasons why we decided, when we implemented our new literacy curriculum, we went with writing first. And as we're collecting data over time, we do have the SBACK data, but the Empower data, as we track that over time, will also give us some indications of our gain as well. In grade eight, again, variability. And that variability, you'll notice, is reflected across the district. You'll notice that in the year 2011, 12, you'll notice that compared to 1213, there was a significant drop. But you notice a drop across all the districts as well. So we take that into consideration when we start thinking about why our students performed had that drop as we move along. One of the issues with that year, in the grade bar there for eighth grade, in that year, we implemented new curriculum materials and provided some significant professional development in Springboard, used that as a framework, which is a College Board product. And you'll know, at first blush, it would look like an implementation dip. When we take a look at the performance across all the districts and also notice a bit of a dip there, it makes you wonder. The other part of that is, again, a fall implementation also tells us that we really wouldn't start to see a change for another year or so. And in the grade 11 for writing, you'll notice that in our comparable district, Kennebunk, there was great variation, but we were rather consistent. And during that time, the ELA department at the high school was working on developing and having conversations around common expectations for writing and beginning to talk about developing common rubrics in their classrooms. So that whole steady line is not surprising, and that's consistent with other data that we've seen. Terms of mathematics, important to note for mathematics, in the year 1112, we implemented, that was the first year of our Math in Focus investment at K5. And you'll note that it might seem like a bit of an, again, you wouldn't see any change in the orange line, because the test was also implemented within a month of the new curriculum. So you see a slight dip in that second year, but in the third year, you see the data starting to move forward and starting to rebound. Likewise, at the middle school, the middle school went through an investment and professional development during the year 2012, 13. And again, you see a little bit of that dip, but when you look across the state and look across other districts, there was a bit of a dip, except in Kennebunk, that was more or less steady. And also, at the high school, grade 11 mathematics, we invested, not only at the middle school, but we invested at the high school as well. And you can see a slight upward trend in the data there. We did some PD, but we did not do as much PD as at the other level. So that's just a little snapshot of how we've been using and taking a look at the KNECAP data. We had one year of the Smarter Balanced Assessment data. The data was limited. We couldn't do a whole lot of what we call data mining with that. And now that the interactive report site is just no longer there, it makes it even more problematic. So there was only one year. The data was a challenge, because there were a number of high schools to compare, high schools in particular, because a number of students opted out of taking the test. In some of our area schools, particularly Yarmouth, they weren't even able to report results. There were so few students who took the assessment in that year. The way in which the information came out publicly was by school, it wasn't even by grade level. So particularly, we have a number of school districts who have grades, schools with lots of different grade configurations, so we couldn't even compare apples to apples or grades to grades. So it's very limited in what we can do. And I also talked about how reading was combined into an ELA literacy. But what we can do is take a look at how Scarborough compared with Maine performance, particularly in, we can do that in math, but we can also take a look at ELA to see how the red line denotes Scarborough performance across all the grades, grades three through 11. The blue line is the state, so we can take a look at that. You'll notice significant dip in that sixth grade year in that year for ELA. You'll also notice it in math, when we look at the math piece. One of the questions we started asking ourselves was why, what's going on there? Interestingly enough, it is the sixth grade, this was after, this was the first year of their redesign, the sixth grade is in the portable. So we started asking ourselves questions around, was it the technology, was it the implementation of the assessment, was it, what was it? So we started brainstorming lots of different ideas. And without trend data, we really can't tell. So we're just noting that, we've gathered some information around that, and so we're going to keep an eye on that. What we can do though, is we can take a look at our KNECAP average scores in math and how that compared to the state. And then look at the SBACK data, even though it's one year, and look at how that difference compares as well. So you'll note in that chart, for grade five, when we take the average of our performance over time and find the difference, it's 13 points. When we look at that one year of SBACK data, you'll notice that the difference, oops, I highlighted the wrong column, the difference is 17 points compared to 13 points. So I would consider it a good thing that even though there were higher standards in that assessment, it was a more rigorous assessment, we were further from the state than when we were taking the KNECAP data. Likewise, in eighth grade, the difference was 17 percentage points, and the difference with the SBACK was 24 points, and grade 11, 23-point difference. Those are all good things, which are indicators that where we invest, and we've invested heavily in mathematics over the years, where we invest, we see some gains and indicators of success. Or at least growth in those areas. We won't be happy until 100% of our students meet or exceed. So in conclusion, the scheduled release, at this point in time, I did a quick scan of my email, and at this point in time, it's still scheduled for December 7th. We're still going through and reviewing the data that is online. We will, our plan is to post data, once it's public, we'll post our own data and our own little bit of context and summary, a little press release. But I would like to remind you and the public that we're going to consider this baseline data. We'll continue to compare over time, similar to how we've done in the KNECAP. We're going to look at group data, we're going to look at individual data. Hopefully, in years moving forward, the data will come back to us sooner. They won't be building the system as they're moving along, and we'll be able to be a little bit more efficient with some decisions. But we like to have three years of trend data before making decisions. And again, a reminder, with additional data sets, other data to look at. And we do a lot of observation pieces and ask lots and lots of questions to gather additional information before making big decisions, before we invest. Questions?
Do you have a sense of the opt-out rate for the standardized test, and if so, if there's any sort of demographic generalities that can be drawn, some students who do opt-out?
No, I don't know that there were. We had very few opt-outs here at the high school. We missed the 95 participation rate by maybe a couple of percentage points. So it really, in terms of our data and validity, it really didn't impact that. But I think I was looking at across other districts, and it ranged anywhere from about 50% to 80%. And I really didn't take a close look at sort of the demographic areas.
And you assume that that rate is probably the same for Wentworth and the middle school as well?
No, not at all. The elementary schools across the state, there were much fewer opt-outs across the state as well as Wentworth and the middle school.
Lizzy?
For the science information that you were going over, it was the changing landscape of the MEA?
Great question, thank you. I forgot to mention that piece. Our data, our science data will also be released on December 7th, and then I can provide information if you'd like to see that. And that would be across the last five years.
I just had a question. You had mentioned that there were new national standards for this science?
In science.
And that the state had yet to adopt the national standards. Do you happen to know if there's like an estimated year when we're going to adopt the science standards?
There is no estimated date as to when those standards will be adopted.
I figured not, but I thought maybe.
Nothing has been released.
All right.
Donna?
Couple of things, Monique. So the Empower Maine is now what we are called, that is our MEA test.
Yes.
Empower Maine, the name of the company or the name of?
No, it's the iTesting, iTester platform. It's not the name of the company, it's the name of the test. It all fits under the umbrella of Maine Educational Assessment. Other Maine Educational Assessments also include things like the ELL access testing Other Maine Educational Assessments also include things like the ELL access testing, the alternative assessment portfolios for students who, special needs students who are unable to access the Empower Me test. So it's a whole range of assessments. The science is also MEA. We just call the science MEA science, but we refer to it as Empower Me is the name of this.
And another thing is, you had mentioned when we were looking at the grade five reading the NECAP comparison, the beginning of your presentation, you talked about students who are having difficulty and that you were providing some support to those students. I was just wondering, when during the day can they receive that help and who's providing that? Do we have the staff we need to, in order to cover those supports? Is it a pullout program or what?
Sure. And even though there are no state tests at the K2, we also have our, and we have a, an obligation, a mandated obligation, state mandated obligation, to provide what's called universal screening assessments, so that we can identify any students who are at risk of failure, to provide those supports as early as possible. So at the K2 level, we have academic support staff folks as well, and at 3-5 and 6-8, and also at the high school, we have supports in place. When students access those at K2, it's really on an individual student basis in terms of when they might be able to go down to the academic support to receive those services. Sometime, it depends on the student and their particular schedule. Sometimes they sneak it in, in and around, the lunchtime is a bit of a break time. We don't try to, we don't try to access students during recess time, which is a very important time. It may come out of a special time. It may come out of either science or social studies time. But we don't, at the elementary, have a special period or block in time where there is time for students to go to get extra help. At 3-5, though, this year, they have reworked the schedule a bit to be able to offer some of that time once a week, where the whole school is involved in sort of almost like that high school model of enrichment. The difference at the high school is, and the middle school also offers that through their rise period, is that they have that over the course of several days during the week. Because of the rotating schedule, it's not every day throughout the week, but it's more than once a week at Wentworth.
And that, our ed techs are providing that?
We have professional staff as well as ed techs providing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you and our staff finding the ease of administering this new test?
It was, this test, as well as the Smarter Balanced Assessment, was completely online. In other words, they needed to use their computers to take the test. Science is still paper and pencil, SAT is still paper and pencil. So it was quite a steep learning curve for staff, as well as students, during that first Smarter Balanced Year of Testing. This last year, that piece was much better, and the administration was a little bit easier. We run meetings with teachers to help them go through the manuals and go over the do's and the don'ts on how to administer. It takes time, and it takes time out of instruction and teacher planning time, but it is, it's much better this past year than it was the year before.
And how would you speculate it might have been had our children not had the access they have to the computer on a daily basis?
Oh, it would have been much more difficult. It would have interrupted much more instructional time, just in terms of getting the students to the equipment versus the equipment being with the students. And there's also the factor of just being in, the students, particularly at the elementary and the middle school, took these assessments in the comfort of their classrooms, as opposed to going to a special location that was different. Not necessarily less comfortable, but just a different environment. We used to at Wentworth when we were doing this, we used to take the library, eliminate all library instructional programming because we had to set up a computer lab there. So students kind of came in and used those computers in the library.
And I would just add, not because I was here, but just knowing the transition from pencil paper to computer-based testing, that that time on device that our students are able to have because we have one-on-one device support in the district is critical, particularly when it comes to the ELA and having to generate, you know, pieces of writing from start to finish on a device. So that, having that familiar, being familiar with the device is really important, but then also being, knowing how to click and drag different things for the math is, it's a whole separate skill set.
Absolutely. It's the online tools that students can use, and it's also the ability to compose online.
And would you say it was easier for the students to adapt than the staff?
From what I see, it's easier for students than me. I can't speak for all the staff, but students are a lot quicker than I am.
They're right there, aren't they? They're wonderful.
Absolutely.
Jody? Thank you for putting this all together. It's fantastic, and I love all your charts. But I thought it was impressive and sort of exciting, and I wish we had more data to sort of mine out more years. But when you look at the math testing and you see that our new curriculum was implemented with the gray line at seventy-three, and then that next year, it jumps up to seventy-nine, whereas the majority of the other districts is, was sort of going the other way. And so I just feel like that, I wish there were more lines to sort of check and see how that kept going, so.
Yeah, and the data around in comparing the average NECAP to the SBAQ, I think is particularly notable in that, you know, the state, our performance grew from where the state was, even with more rigorous standards. So that is really impressive to me.
And then I just had a quick question on the opt-out, and I don't know if I can get an answer here tonight, but my understanding is that if districts have a large number of opting out students, it affects your funding from the state. And so how does Yarmouth, if they're not even able to produce results because they had so many people who opted out?
It puts a district at risk of losing their funding, because there is a required, this is a, was a federal law, is shifting, we now, that was the No Child Left Behind law, we're shifting next year, the year after, we're transitioning to Every Student Succeeds Act. There will still be ninety-five percent participation expectation. There will still be annual assessments under that law. What that means in terms of accountability and implications might shift, but the participation rate is still there, so it only put you at risk. So I had to provide documentation at, around the conversations we, I had with parents of those students who chose not to participate in the assessment, in order to show almost a due diligence that we were trying to educate our community on the importance of taking these assessments. So this last year, we made our participation rate, and I think going back to the SAT, a number of other districts made their participation rate as well, because the SAT has more value to juniors at the high school than this, where this Smarter Balanced thing came from, which doesn't impact my future at all. So there's much more motivation with the SAT.
And it's, it's almost an additional test, which now has been eliminated because we've gone back to the SAT.
Thank you, very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have more superintendent report?
That is all of my superintendent reporting.
I know we already talked about adjusting the agenda, but I'm going to rearrange the agenda to bump up recognition.
Thank you. I do have one recognition tonight, and I would like to recognize two of our high school students. As everyone knows, we are a part of the, we are participating in a NEASC self-study this year. And so due to that, or because of that, superintendents in school districts who are affiliated with, with the NEASC work and with NESDEC, which is the New England School Development Council, are awarded the opportunity to recognize two students in their district. Well, it depends on the number of students in your district. So because of our size of our high school, we are able to recognize two students who we think should be given this, this honor of national recognition of a academic growth and student leadership. And so what I did when I received this letter letting me know that we were able to select two students was talked with Principal Creach and talked about what it, what it means to be a student who is showing academic growth and what it means to be a student leader in learning at Scarborough High School. And he worked really closely with the guidance counselors to think about all of our students and who would be most deserving of this honor. And so one of our students is able to be here tonight, and I just wanted to publicly recognize him. I know I'm still learning about all of our students, but I had a moment before the meeting started just to, to chat with William Tauss, and he was telling me that he's taking lots of AP classes. He's already thinking about college, and he's been visiting colleges and has been accepted to Pitt, was it? But has others on his dream, other dream schools on his list that he's still reaching for, and also recently was recognized as a member of the Allstate Jazz Band. And so I'm so thankful that his parents were able to be here tonight and that he was able to come tonight just so that we could recognize him for his academic growth and leadership in learning.
You have to walk the dog with you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, and now we want you to step back and get a picture first. Then you can come back.
He's blushing.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. So again, the, the requirements for this recognition is that it is a high school student who has pursued high level of academic effort and who has also served as a positive role model for the entire student body. So congratulations, William.
Do you want to tell us who the other one is?
Yes, I can. Our other recipient was not able to be here, but Sarah Yoder was our other student of recognition. And that concludes my recognition for tonight. William and your, you, Mr. and Mrs. Tauss, you're welcome to stay, but you certainly can leave this room.
Thank you for coming.
Those AP classes keep you busy.
Okay, so now moving on to 7.0, the chair's report. Basically, I will just give a quick update on Thanksgiving. It was a community event. We were very fortunate to have the space of the Wentworth cafeteria to host in. And it was all covered by donations. It was 100% donation funded. But I think it just is a good example of when Wentworth School was built, was with the I to community events. And what a fantastic venue for this. Besides the massive kitchen and people who know how to use it, that were there volunteering their time, just the layout of the cafeteria, we were able to set up fifty tables, actually, I think in the end, we only set up thirty-six tables. But we actually were able to draw one of the curtains across and separate out ten tables because we weren't sure if we would need them or not, and it made the room feel even smaller and a little fancier with the curtain drawn. It was just a really nice event with a lot of community members, a cross-section from infants to people in their eighties and nineties who were there. I mean, it was amazing. There were 165 people there that ate. We had about 150 volunteers over two days. And again, it's not, wasn't a school event, but a lot of school students were involved. We had, you know, volunteers running the gamut of age. And I think it was, it's really just what the vision was for that school. Without a community center, this is the best we could hope for, is to design Wentworth in a way that would allow these events to happen. And it was, I know, it's obviously not the first event that's happened there, but I think it was just a fantastic event that happened because we had the space, that there really wasn't another place, even the high school cafeteria would not have worked as well. So, great job, Wentworth Architects, because that was great.
Several people who mentioned at the end how nice it was because they were going to eat alone or with their spouse, the two of them, and said they came to the community dinner and sat at a table with other people and really had an enjoyable meal. So that was very heartwarming to know that people took advantage of that and were not alone.
Yeah, it was, it was really, just a really cool day. It really was.
I think it would be nice to note that, that two former board members donated, the Bob Mitchell and his family and Chris Chiazzo and his family, and they were able to pay the second half of the donation that was made by the Carter family and the One Step Party Shop, who had donated all of the linens and the china and the flatware. And we, a couple of former school board people picked up the, the rest of it. Very proud, very pleased.
That was very cool. And then also, I just want to point out that our next meeting, our workshop meeting on December 15th has been moved to Wentworth. This is our annual meeting with the local legislators, and typically has a bigger audience and more people sitting at the table, so we only have half of the chambers that week. So we're moving the meeting to Wentworth. It's also, will be an update from Dan Cecil and long-range planning. So two, two good items on the workshop, but you know.
It's a must-watch.
It is, really, really. Set up your DVRs if you're not going to be able to make it. It's going to be a good one. And definitely, we'll be referring back to those throughout the year, so.
Absolutely.
And also, I will just mention, I don't know if I'm stealing Student Thunder, but there's some concerts coming up?
You can go ahead, you can tell my friend.
Okay, okay. I just, I should have checked with you in advance, but just before our next meeting, I want to point out that there are two concerts. The high school band concert is December 7th at 7:00 PM, and December 15th, the same night as this, so you'll have to choose. It's the combined high school chorus and band holiday concert at 7:00 PM as well. So that is it for my chair report. And moving on to 8.0, the committee reports. Can you start down finance?
Sure. Finance was originally scheduled to meet tonight, but we didn't have a lot to talk about. We're still waiting for the town council to pull together their committees and elect the chair and all of that. So once that happens next Wednesday for them, they'll now be on an alternate schedule with us. Usually it's the same week, but today's first. So, once that happens, I'll reach out to the finance chair of the town council and try to start coordinating our joint meetings, because I think the budget calendar is coming right up, and we need to sort of get working on that soon.
Thank you.
Donna, do you want to say anything about policy? I know we have lists coming up, but.
No, not in particular about policy, but Joanne and I did attend the regional vocational schools meeting, and I can't say there's anything in particular pertaining to Scarborough that came up there. There were some busing discussions, and I don't remember that, do you have the date of the next meeting? It's January, I think.
No, it's in January, it's 30th, 19th. My birthday, how I remember. Jody's going to go, I think.
Okay.
Okay, communications. Carrie, do you have any?
Not too much to report. We did meet with Julie on Tuesday afternoon. We're continuing to discuss, as we've mentioned before, ways that communications can help start to help out the nutrition program, which is a perennial, ends up being a budget issue with having to shift some finances around to help cover the nutrition program. So we're just continuing to brainstorm how communications, how we can inform the public and the parents about all the great things going on in our program and try to start to close that gap.
Christine, did you have a long-range planning update or you save it all?
Other than where Dan Cecil will be giving his report out December 15th? No.
Okay. Jackie, negotiations?
Yes, we have had a notice from the Scarborough Education Association that they would like to start negotiating for the bus drivers, and we met this evening to start to plan for that. We don't have a report for the board as yet. We'll have to meet a couple of other times. And then the Maine School Boards Association. And then the Main School Boards Association Legislative Committee met concerning the new certification rules. And they really are a mess, quite frankly, if you've had an opportunity to look at them. And Main School Boards is recommending that any action be postponed for a year and that more people become involved setting those standards for certification. Because if you read the whole thing, you wouldn't know what the heck was going on with the certification, quite frankly. And it covers all areas of teacher certification. So, we have submitted testimony and I will let you know what the Subcommittee for the Main, for the Education Committee will do. It'll go to the Legislature, you know, and there will then be a public hearing. But I can tell you, as a former educator and as a school board person, it would, if those regulations are passed, as is, everybody will be confused.
Kelly, I have one more that I wanted to mention as well is that I attended the Business and School Partnership Meeting. And this is a new group that has kind of evolved out of an older group. And it was really quite impressive in terms of the number of people. I think we had about 20 people at that event. And Monique, as well as Karen Martin from Sedco, kind of heading up that group. And I'd say overall, what we're looking at is not so much events that are just single events where we say, okay, this is where our kids are going to learn what careers they might consider. Instead, it would be taking a look at how can we embed the concept of looking at careers over the lifetime of our K-12 students. So, it's, I'm sure it'll be exciting and interesting work, especially to see this evolve into something much more intense and continual.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to the 9.0, Student Representative Report.
I'll go first. So, for the middle school this week, so Scarborough Middle School Student Leadership Council sponsored the Stuff the Bus Food Drive for Purple Street. And with the help of parents in the community, the drive was a huge success. The middle school alone stuffed practically the entire bus and had over 2,500 items collected to help Purple Street through the holiday season. The Student Council students set a goal of 1,000 items, so they earned a pajama day on December 12th. I'm super jealous. And Mrs. Ram, 7th grade homeroom, won the Golden Soup Can Award for donating the most items. The 6th grade inquiry team went on a field trip to the Boston Museum of Science this week. So the displays at the museum were aligned with the students' work in the Can't Believe My Eyes unit, which was all about light. So, they were able to make the connection between what they were learning at school and what they learned at the museum. Again, super jealous, I wish I got to go to the science museum. And so, all students are going to be participating in a Day of Code on December 21st. So in addition to their work with coding, there are groups of students who are challenged together to, challenged to work collaboratively to develop a new app. That's very cool. For high school reports, like Mrs. Murphy mentioned earlier, there's a holiday course and band concert Thursday the 15th at 7:00 PM. There's also the Senior Citizens Holiday Concert, which is December 22nd at 10:00 AM. Winter sports have begun, so good luck to all of our winter athletes and good on you for being able to do physical activity when it gets dark at 5:00 PM. That's really impressive. And congratulations to all the seniors who have already been accepted and committed to their respective universities. And good luck to all of you who are still in the process of applying. There we go, that's all I got.
So, for the Wentworth Report, Wentworth also contributed to the Stuff the Bus Program, and it was also very successful there. They are also working on the Coats for Kids Program. Coats, as well as snow pants, hats, and matching gloves and mittens will be donated to children in need. And the PTA-sponsored Family Literacy Night, Treasure Your Time with Books, in cooperation with the Scholastic, Scholastic Book Fair was an enormous success. I would also have a report on the primary schools, but I couldn't get any information, so.
Thank you, students. And we are now moving on to new business. So, 11.1, School Board Committee Assignments. So, we are all the same people that were here the last year, so there has not been a bunch of change, but I'll read through the committee assignments, just for the record. Negotiations will still be chaired by Jackie Perry and Christine Massengill and Kelly Murphy, who also sit on negotiations. Policy, Donna Beely will be the Chair, joined by Kate Miles and Kelly Murphy. Communications, Carrie Leifert will be the Chair. Jody Shea and Kate Miles will join her. Finance will be chaired by Jody Shea. Carrie Leifert and Christine Massengill will join on finance. Health and safety, I will stay, the liaison for that. Long-range planning will be Christine Massengill. Vocational schools, we're going to do a tag team on that one because that's a big commitment in the middle of a workday for us to all, for one person to commit to those meetings. So we're hopefully going to take some turns with those remaining meetings for the year. Jackie Perry will stay our liaison for the Legislature. And Donna will stay our Business and School Partnership Liaison. And for advisory to the Board for changing start times in school calendar, that has been Carrie and myself, but anyone can join us at any time for that, and we hope that we'll have an update sometime soon about that. And I think that covers it. Were there any liaison positions that I left off the list? I think that, I think that's the complete list, so.
Did we have like an advisor for the school calendar or?
That was the one. Carrie and I have done it before, the calendar and the school start times. But I feel like anyone could jump in on that if they wanted to. And that's it for the committee assignments. So now moving to 11.2, K-2 Lead Teacher Appointment.
Various K-2 school staff have been nominated to fill these positions that will be funded from the General Fund. The recommendation is to appoint the K-2 Lead Teacher positions as presented in Agenda Item 11.2.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Move approval as printed.
Second. Any questions?
I know that Mrs. Sizemore is aware that there are two different positions at each school. So would you tell for the public, please, the difference between the two positions at each school?
Yes. The K-2 principals and lead teachers had met and talked about roles and responsibilities at the school and what the needs were for the school, and decided that it would best serve the school if they took the stipend allotted money in the contract and split it so that there's a building lead who does more of the management pieces during the day, working in the school, and then there is a curriculum learning lead, they call it, and that person does more of the curriculum work for the schools. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Seven plus two. Thank you. Moving on to 11.3, First Reading of Policy IHBAA, Referral and General Education Interventions. Take it away, Donna.
So, basically, as you know, we make changes on our policies based on what we learned, particularly from our law offices at Drummond and Woodsom. And in this particular one, all it was is changing the title and then indicating the references and the cross-reference, so that's all you have to know about this one.
Move approval as printed?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Seven plus two. 11.4, First Reading of Policy IHBAA-R, Referral Procedures and General Education Interventions.
So in this one, it was just the title again, and if you look on page four, then you will see some changes where a paragraph has been added and a paragraph deleted, and then the cross-referencing.
Move approval as printed?
Second.
I just want to point out that, as Donna said, these are minor changes here. And I can tell you that there was great debate when we first brought these forward for policies. And they were really vetted by members of the Board and the public.
Kelly, Jody?
I just had a typo, I think, and it wasn't one of the changes, so it's probably been just pushed down the line a while, but the first sentence says Scarborough Public Schools will refer the IEP team, all school-age students suspected of having. I think we need to insert a "to," so it should say, "The Scarborough Public Schools will refer to the IEP team, all school-age students suspected of having a disability that requires special education and related services."
I agree. Anyone else have anything else?
I thought about it and then I said no.
It's a catch, so we'll have an amendment to-
I move that we amend the first paragraphs to include the word "to" after "refer."
Okay, let's just vote on the, yeah, let's vote on the amendment, everyone? Okay, seven plus two. And now back to the original motion as amended.
I'm voting.
You're voting? Are we already voting on? Okay, seven plus two. Thank you. On to 11.5, First Reading of Policy ACAA, Harassment and Sexual Harassment of Students.
So this one is basically looking at some definitions that they're asking that school departments clarify the term sexual orientation. So there it is for you, and just legal references again to the American Disabilities Act. And that's about it.
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Seven plus two. Thank you. Moving on to 11.6, First Reading of Policy ACAR, Student Discrimination and Harassment Complaint Procedure.
And we don't have any changes here. We're just looking to the fact that we did review this policy and it is in compliance. That's it.
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Seven plus two. Thank you. 11.7, First Reading of Policy IHBAC, Child Find.
So on this one, you can see that we're, a paragraph is being added there and basically speaks to the expediency to which the school department acts in terms of finding students that are in need of whatever kind of services they may need when they enter the school system, whether it's mid-year or whenever.
Move approval as printed?
Second.
Oh, you were ready to vote, okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I'm in favor.
All right, well then, all in favor? Thank you, seven plus two. 11.8, First Reading of Policy JKAA, Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion. Move approval, oh, actually.
So basically, this one is adding two, two small sentences, the first paragraph, basically being very specific about what a physical restraint does or does not cover. So again, it's more of a definition.
Move approval as presented. Second. Any questions or comments about this one? Jackie?
As a teacher, I once had to physically restrain a student who was absolutely out of control. And I had to sit there for a couple of hours until the social worker showed up, first day of school, quite frankly. And I had been trained on how to do that without giving, you know, without hurting a child. But there's a piece in here that says that you have to make up your mind whether or not a child is going to harm themselves or others. And maybe it's more in the regulation than in the... But that's a split-second decision for whomever is with that child at that time. And I just happen to feel on a personal note that it's too restrictive for a teacher or an aide or a principal, whomever it might happen to be, who has to do some physical restraint on a child. And I just would like to know how everybody else feels about that, and from Allison and the superintendent, how we could modify it to make it easier, if you will, or more palatable for staff person.
We are fortunate that Allison Marchese, Director of Special Services, is an audience member. She stepped right up, she can give us some background on, on the seclusion and restraint.
And we've had this discussion before, by the way.
So if I'm understanding correctly, I actually think it should be this restrictive because it is our duty to keep all students safe, and the last resort is actually a physical restraint. The training the staff receives and some staff are specialized training through a program called Safety Care. It is all about other ways to de-escalate before you put hands on. So, I think for the protection of students, it should be a tight policy. Thank you.
Anybody else want to comment? Jody?
I just wanted to reiterate that these are minor changes to these policies. I think when we say them out loud and no one has the documents to refer to at home, it sounds big and scary. But it is just defining what a physical escort is with students, to help them, redirect them from whatever it is that's happening to a safe spot, to down the hallway, back to their classroom, something along those lines. It's not a major discussion here, it's just-
Absolutely correct.
A small redirection. And then the other one is allowing a teacher to-
To break up a fight.
To break up a fight.
Correct.
So those are the two things that we're seeing on our papers, just for the people at home. I didn't want it to seem so big and scary not knowing what we're looking at.
And I would just add that we have started this year posting, Kelly Johnson has been posting all of the supporting documents on the website in addition to the agenda, so that tomorrow, by tomorrow, usually she does it really quickly, anyone at home could come back and reference these policies as you're seeing them.
Perfect. Does anybody else want to comment on Jackie's concern? Donna?
So, and just a little bit to respond to your comments, Jackie, is I think over the years, what we've seen is an evolution of, you know, ways in which we can try to redirect students without touching them. And a big piece of this is the amount of recording that occurs as a result of a single incident, which takes up a considerable amount of time for our staff. Because every minute to minute is, has to be recorded as to what actually took place in the opinion of the staff who are handling that incident. You know, and I'm sure, there must be law cases that play into why we end up having, you know, the changes to the law that occurs. But it, average people do not understand what it takes to handle some of these situations in our schools. It's just really, it's complement to our staff. It's reasons why teachers leave because it can be really difficult to handle these situations. And those who step up to the specialized positions, we're just so fortunate to have people that want to do this work, not only our- want to do this work, not only our teachers, but our ed techs as well, who are willing to, you know, work with kids that are truly in great need that years ago would not have been in our regular school.
I don't want to put someone on the spot, but Carrie, you've taken safety care?
I have.
Yeah, do you want to comment on this at all?
I agree that it should be a restrictive policy, absolutely. Restraint should be the last option. You don't want to go there. The kids don't want you to go there. Nobody wants to go there. And my, the one thing, when I have done my safety care training, that comes up, that always, eh, like, it's hard for me to hear, the safety care instructor always tells a story about a student alone in a computer lab, pushing computers off desks, not in Scarborough, but this was like at a regional training. And the teachers just had to stand there and watch it happen, because they weren't causing imminent harm to themselves or to any other students. And as a school board member, knowing that how much each of those computers cost, that's a painful story to hear. But that's the way that the law is now, and that's, you know, it's, kids are our priority, not computers and equipment, so.
Thanks. All right, are we ready? All in favor? Seven plus two. Thank you. And then 11.9 is the first reading of policy JKAA-R, procedures on physical restraint and seclusion.
And so, you can see on this particular one, on almost every single page, it's the removal of the word imminent. Is the, is the action that's taking place imminent risk to injury for the child. So, it's been the removal of that word.
Move approval?
Second.
Any comments or questions about the "R"? Okay, all in favor? Seven plus two. Right, so that takes us to 11.10, high school choral director.
Patrick Volker has been nominated to fill this position created by resignation. Mr. Volker received his bachelor's degree in music education from Vandercook College of Music in Chicago. He's been a choir director, music teacher, and piano teacher in different high schools in the Chicago area for five years. Mr. Volker will be placed on step six of the bachelor scale per the collective bargaining agreement. The recommendation is to appoint Patrick Volker as the high school choral director.
Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second. All in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, do you want to have discussion on this? Donna's picking a word.
I was just wondering, is this a full-time position?
It is a full-time position.
Okay.
And we're putting him to the test. He's already attended two arts council meetings, and we'll have a performance coming up soon, so.
Is it just high school?
Just high school.
Right?
Similar to the band director, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it a choral teacher or choral director? I think at this point, it is the choral teaching position that we are-
And directing the choir is part of the teaching position that he has, right?
No, I think it's a choral teacher.
Okay, that makes more sense, that's why I was questioning that.
Big shoes to fill.
So, we need to amend this, to say-
Amended to a choral teacher.
Teacher?
Teacher. Okay. Do we need to make an official amendment on that one? Since the director position would be a stipended position?
I move that we change the title to high school choral teacher.
Second. All in favor of the amendment? Seven plus two? And now, are we done with discussion on that one? Okay, so all in favor of the amended title? Thank you. Seven plus two. It brings us to 12.0, we have a motion to adjourn.
So, move?
Second. All in favor? Seven plus two. Thank you.